We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Calhoun.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier. Crop.
Here.
Security.
Here.
Rick. Yor.
Okay, I'm looking to see if I have a, okay. Nope. Fournier is not feeling well and Yor let us know she won't be here. Maybe Commissioner Rick is on his way. So, but we will, we don't really need a motion to excuse, but if anyone feels the necessity, we can. If not, this is the portion, we do, for.
Yeah, we have a court.
Yeah, we do. This is the portion of the meeting that we allow the public to address the commission. All that we ask is that you come to the microphone, give us your full name, your residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. If you would like to address the commission at this time, come on up.
Good afternoon. Frank Warga, 636 Wellington Crescent. A few concerns I just want to talk about today. The first one being the public ordinance at Shadyside Park. There's an ordinance not permitting vehicles in the park, and I feel like it's being violated daily and on a really large scale. I count forty vehicles sometimes. Vehicles in the park might not seem like a big problem, but I just want to paint the picture to tell you what I see. So these cars drive past the public ordinance sign, feet from the basketball court where we're playing basketball, feet from the jungle gym in the swings where the babies are playing. There's no roads in the park. There's no stop signs. Then they park in the field, take and leave in the field. In some cases, I'm not saying all, they get out and they engage in adult activities. I see what I see, I smell what I smell. But these, these people then get back into their vehicles and drive back across the park where our babies are playing. Parks and vehicles, it's the recipe for a disaster. Can you guys imagine what's going to happen one day? So, I don't know. I asked the commission, are the public ordinances enforced in Shadyside Park? If so, who enforces them? What frequency are they enforced? Is there a way these frequencies can be increased, altered, extended, until these cars stop driving in this park? I don't know. Next thing, in Shadyside Park, the same thing as the pier and the boat launch. The question I have for the commission is the pier and the boat canoe launch, owned, operated, and managed by the city of Mount Clemens. If it's not, who's responsible for it? If it is, can we get some maintenance? The docks decrepit decayed, it's dangerous. There's debris everywhere, and it's unusual. Now, for those of you who don't know, Mount Clemens has the only boat launch from the city of Mount Clemens all the way to the mouth of the river. That is a gem. That's a revenue stream. I cannot believe we treat that thing the way, the way we do. It's a shame. So, I think all the parks need help. You know, our school system doesn't have the best ratings. We pay super high taxes, don't get me started. Our curbage, our, our public parks and our open spaces are all we have left. Our curb appeal. Without that, what have we got? This neighborhood becomes undesirable. We need to fix that. Taxpayers, you know, we, we pay the money, you guys manage it. We need help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the commission at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on to city business, to for a presentation by AEW on combined sewers.
Ready to go, Ashley?
Yep. I have a handout for all of you.
I think everybody knows Ashley, but along with Ashley tonight is Fatmir, so maybe you haven't met Fatmir yet, so.
So you have a packet in front of you. This is a memo and then some appendices to go along with the memo for a review of the combined sewer system and then all of the areas that contribute to that system as well. The review was kind of kicked off by a lot of the flooding concerns that happened over the summer with the very large rain events that caused a lot of flooding. This, some of this information of the areas has been known for a couple of years just from historical maps, but we've never done a, we'll say, a formal or preliminary review of the areas and what it might take the city to separate those combined sewer areas. So in this memo, we explain how we looked at the areas throughout the entire city. So Appendix A is a map of all of those areas. And that's your, it's folded up so you guys can open it up and take a look at it. But all of those areas in different colors represent a combined sewer area. So this is where the storm water flows into a sanitary sewer and then ultimately to the wastewater treatment plant for the city. This rainwater and surface runoff does not make it into the Clinton River or any of the drains in the city. So all of this rain that falls then goes into the sanitary sewer where homeowners and businesses have their sanitary leads connected to. So typically, when you're seeing someone with a basement flood in a rain event, they are most likely in a combined sewer area. It's not always the case, but it is a very large, a very high probability that they are. So those shapes are also on the screen now as well. Those were all mapped from historical maps the city had and then also some CCTV that was done in 2018 as part of the city saw program. Those helped delineate all of these areas. They're not perfect. These areas were, are just drawn on a map. It doesn't take into account elevations in the areas. It goes to either a closest lot line or halfway to a lot to take, just to account for some surface drainage. This does also not account for any footing drains that may be present at homes as well as any roof drains that are connected into someone's sanitary lead. It's very difficult to determine that without doing a, an overall city assessment, but given the age of a lot of the homes in the city, I would say a very large majority have a high potential to have the roof or footing drains connected into their sanitary lead. So that is another element to where you're getting storm water into your sanitary system. So none of that is shown on the maps. This, this map strictly shows where storm sewer ties into your sanitary system. So to take a look at the, all of these areas and help determine how or what the cost might be to separate the city, we did a feasibility review of where the storm sewer is located that is separated in relation to these areas that are combined. So Appendix B does go through every area and is called out by the letter and number that's on the map. So you can see some other information on the spreadsheet that's in Appendix B. But we looked at this as an overall preliminary effort to what might it take to separate the city? So we're, we're looking at overall footage of new storm sewer, potential structures. We kind of estimated how many we think might need to be installed. And then we assigned a difficulty to do that separation. So that difficulty took into account, who is the owner of the road? What type of surface is there? How long of a run is it? Is it a hundred feet? Is it a thousand feet of storm sewer? Are there other utilities that might be in the way that might be an issue? Or are there just other things as we're looking at our, your guys' GIS system that make us feel this is, this is difficult? So we classified each repair or separation area as easy, medium, difficult, or very difficult. Very difficult, difficult, and medium are most likely going to require hydraulic studies and/or stormwater modeling to determine if the appropriate separation can work. So the, the initial preliminary cost estimate is just under thirty-seven million to separate the entire city. That includes a twenty-five percent off the construction cost for engineering fees. That's purely an estimate, just so you guys can see some budgeting of what might, what it might look like. So for easy, we have about fifty thousand. Those ones, there's, I think there's actually three in the spreadsheet. There's not very many we would consider easy. The majority of them are, as you can see, medium, difficult, and very difficult. So these numbers, like I mentioned, do not include any engineering fees, so no hydro, or in the construction cost. So no hydraulic studies, stormwater modeling. Topographic surveys have been performed to develop these numbers. That's what's really going to refine these numbers if a project were to come to fruition.
Quick question.
Sure.
Just to clarify, so you're saying with this, it's just saying how difficult it would be to separate them, not like the condition?
Correct.
Considering any condition?
Correct. So, thank you, Mr. Calhoun. That kind of leads into my next one. Most of these storm sewers have not been televised. The city's television program in 2018 was generally only for sanitary sewers. So a lot of these areas have been determined from historical maps and some CCTV that has been done. I would recommend prior to performing a project, all of those areas be televised to confirm the connections and then also look at the condition of the storm sewer because it's not been televised. It does open a little bit of a can of worms because you don't know right now what that might look like, but that would be something we would recommend at that time. So that number, that cost could, could raise.
Ashley, can I?
Sure.
Just, I, just to clarify, and you may have said it, I apologize. Looking at the maps, all the areas that are dark, they are not separated.
Every, every area that's highlighted a color on here is, is not separated. Yep, everything that's white is separated, yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought that was what it was.
Yes, and thank you for asking that. All of the colors just delineate who the right-of-way owner would be. So the large green one is MDOT. The red is County, and then blue is Clinton Township. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The cost estimate numbers do take into account pavement removal and replacement and also any road base repairs and then miscellaneous works such as if something needs to be bulk-headed, the contractor's mobilization. That's all factored into that construction cost.
What does "bulk" mean in this context?
If you had a storm structure, or sorry, a sanitary structure that had a storm sewer entering it, someone going into that structure and stopping any flow from coming in there. So they would enter the structure and basically block it with some sort of material. Yeah. So I did mention that the green area is, is MDOT. You will find in the spreadsheet, if you look at some of these areas, they do not show up. They're on the map, but they're not in the spreadsheet, and that's due to who is owning, who owns them. So if it's something in Clinton Township that they have to separate, we didn't include a cost for it because it's not on the city to potentially separate that. The green areas that are MDOT are also not in the spreadsheet because MDOT has a project currently to perform that sewer separation. So it's shown on the map because it's still combined, but it's not in the spreadsheet because they are doing that work and it is planned. And then also the brown shape just to the west of that, that is C9, that is not in the spreadsheet. MDOT sewer separation along Grasha is going to pick up a large majority of that combined sewer area. So it's not in the spreadsheet as they're already going to pick it up. So we'll reevaluate that shape once their project's complete and then see if anything else needs to be adjusted on the map.
One quick question.
Sure.
Maybe you're going to get to it. If you were to, if, you know, if we took just one section, like E2, that's connected to a bunch, would we have the option to just do that one? Or would we have to do them as a group?
Um, where is E2 at?
I'm just saying one that's like, that's against a bunch of them, one specifically.
So we, we separated each shape. You can kind of see by the thicker black lines separating them, and they have a different number, which ones we feel could potentially be done separately. And then in the spreadsheet, I know it's very small text on the spreadsheet, but we do note on there if it has to come after something else. So we did identify that as for planning purposes. So if you chose to plan to do a sewer separation, that is, you know, notes that we have to look at.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I know there's a lot of information in the appendices, and this was kind of just a brief overview to give you guys kind of the overall extent of what is required to separate the city. This does not take into account any basement flooding complaints, so we could overlay that if we had the available data to take a look at this in another light. But I really just wanted to give you guys the, kind of the map and the overall cost and then proceed with any questions that you guys might have had.
I think everyone's digesting. Yes.
So I have a general question.
Sure.
With this kind of information, can we roll some of this stuff into upcoming projects as a way to share the costs? So like if we're dinging up the street for something else, get at it while we're in there kind of thing?
I would, I would recommend reviewing it and checking. One example would be McComb Place in downtown. That is combined, and we chose to keep it combined because of the dirtier water of the downtown. So that is something that we evaluated. And there weren't, you know, a historical amount of basement flooding complaints that would make us look at that, but.
From that particular line?
Exactly, for that particular one. So it is being looked at, and for any other street that is done, we would consider it, absolutely.
So just for people who don't, I mean, have a background in water treatment, to keep, when we kept downtown combined, that means all of the water that is collected in those sewers goes to the water treat, water treatment facility, and then it is treated before it is released into Big Sinclair.
Yes.
And so that way, because of the roads, I mean, well, because of, like you said, all the runoff.
Yeah, we were thinking oils and, you know, you have salt and dirt, and that's just generally dirtier water than like a local road would be.
So, just so people who don't have that background understand you.
I do have a question for the city manager, if he is available to answer. Is this something that you guys can use when prioritizing local road update plans as a way to, again, synchronize maintenance as a way to reduce overall costs and maybe adjust priorities on which roads maybe you're going to get to first if the money's there for it?
I mean, sure, it can be. You know, now what we do is we, what we talk about just repairing roads, we obviously take the worst ones first, and then depending on how much water and sewer money's available to do any repairs, we've, we've been doing the ones that don't need water and sewer work. We're about out of those, right? We're getting to the point where everything that's left to some level. So the easy answer would be yes, because everything that's left is going to need.
It's going to be that.
Something, right? And so I guess the difference with this is you're not just going to replace an existing. You'd probably replace existing and then be adding the additional storm sewer, so.
So this could change the order in which we look at the remaining roads, or?
I mean, that's something we'd really have to look at. And if, if there was a road that was a high priority because of the condition of the road and it also met this scenario, and then if we had enough money and water and sewer, then the answer would be yes.
Does the, I know the Pacer, the Pacer scale, it takes into a lot of, right, considerations when, when evaluating a road. And I know water and sewer is some of it, right? But not.
It's, so Pacer is road surface only.
Only surface.
We, we do have a, I'll call it a complete streets asset management plan that takes into account what utilities are underneath the road and their condition. So the water and sewer and what is known of the storm condition. I don't believe it takes into account combined sewer as a factor in it, but it could. I believe it's just strictly off of what's going to break or what's the worst right now.
But we use Pacer, not complete streets, right? Do we use complete streets? I've only seen Pacer.
The complete streets, in particular for this year, the money that was available for road rehab, we tried to not pick those streets. As Greg mentioned, we're running out of streets that don't need utility work underneath. So we tried to not pick those streets for the, for that type of work because the money wasn't available for water and sewer.
Okay, and so what people need to understand is that the water and sewer fund is completely separate than the typical water, or the typical general budget, right, of the city, the general fund. And so they need to understand that in order for the water fund to operate, it operates under, with water rates, right? So we want to keep everybody's water as affordable as possible and only raise it as much as possible.
As little as possible.
Thank you, as little as possible to, in order to do as much work on the infrastructure as possible, right? So we have to manage that, balance it, so that the rates don't become absolutely astronomical. So, okay, sorry, there's a lot. I know, I think, I just want the public to really understand the picture here, right?
Well, then also, water and sewer is responsible for a portion of the road repair as well. So it's not just the underground. It's a formula that Ashley can explain better than I can that determines their portion of the road work as well.
Is the idea behind that because, you know, if you have to, if there's a leak under the road, you have to cut the road, fix the leak, put the road back, okay? And that's the water sewer's share of that road responsibility, okay?
So, I guess, going forward from here, would it be helpful for us to kind of see a map like this overlaid with where we've gotten those complaints of flooding?
Well, you, you know, you, you guys track that.
We, I don't know that we've gotten any from this year, especially from those summer rains. I don't think we've ever gotten a list from anyone to update, but we do have a historical, I'll say, layer on the city's GIS, but it's, I think it's a little outdated. I don't think we've gotten information in a few years for it. But it's, it's very easy on our end to overlay that if we have the information.
So I think, I would say, going forward and working with that theme, Spencer, I would think that what we would do now is take this and then, one, we know we are getting more local road funding, right, from the state. We don't know what that looks like. We don't know how much. We don't know much about it yet, but we're anticipating that coming in. Also, we need to look at our next capital improvement plan, right? Our next strategic plan will be coming up. Yeah, please.
In our strategic plan currently, we, it's based on the, it's Pacer, right? For the world to. It's based on that, right? Should we look at maybe switching to a complete streets model? Or is that the money used to actually do that? Is that funded by a grant where we actually have to kind of keep it with the current system?
I think you'd want both, right? I mean, you definitely would want Pacer.
We use the Pacer ratings in the complete streets evaluation.
So yeah, and we get, in order to do Pacer, we get a SEMCO grant. So you'd want to maintain it. And well, and then, yeah.
Yes.
Should we add complete streets to our strategic plan if it's not there already?
Definitely something.
Well, so your, your strategic plan is really your capital improvement plans. Your capital improvement plan has your road needs, and then it has your water and sewer needs. And then they're based on, you know, complete streets. And that would be the water and sewer portion, and really Pacer is what fits into the road portion.
I think in our strategic plan, it would be, it would behoove the commission to, you know, just set goals as in, in a, you know, high-level view of like, saying that we need to start planning for and, right? Set the, set the vision for the administration to figure out how they're going to get this. Set some goals.
Okay, I see. So what you'd want to do, I mean, first off, you guys got to sit down and take a close look at this, right? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
This is the first time I saw it too, just so you know. And, you know, I'm sure you have a lot more questions. And then may even have Ashley come back. If you think it's needed, you tell me. But that was the idea, is that you, you can see it's thirty-seven million. We don't have thirty-seven million dollars. And that's why this is what we call the phased approach. Is there a way we can phase this in? So then we look at, can we, you look at your, your areas with the highest risk, right? Which ones have the highest risk? When we get these, these crazy rains we've been getting, and out of those areas, you know, how many of them are the, you know, the ones that are very difficult to deal? And we start looking at dollar figures, and then we say, how can we pay for this? And then I think we should also look at an SRF because I think on the CWSRF side, some of the problems we had with that last application that I notified you about, those don't take place here because it's on the sewer side. And I think, Ashley, I know you do a lot more of these than I do. I think we could get a few more points for this project than we could with lead line as well.
Potentially. I would, it's a different scoring criteria, so I would need to look at that and double-check. But if not, it would be comparable, which doesn't mean you don't get a loan. It just means you might not get loan forgiveness.
Right.
If there is loan forgiveness, right?
Because no matter what, I mean, one thing I can tell you is no matter what path you choose, right, the rates have to pay for it. Okay, this, this isn't factored into that. So you either pay for this with rates or you get a loan and you pay for the loan with rates. It's going to be one or the other. And so if we're going to get a loan, I'd sure rather get a loan at two percent than a loan at maybe four and a half to five percent.
When you mentioned looking at highest risk first, outside of basement flooding, are there other issues that come from combined sewer system that are considered for this?
Well, I mean, that's the main one, right? Anytime something, a personal property floods, that's your, your biggest problem. You know, street flooding would be the next one if for some reason that would happen, but.
But that's at the top of the list.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we actually would rather hold the water in the street, which is why we put the restrictive covers in, right? Keep the water held back so it's not all going into the sewer at the same time.
I do have one, I'll say, recommendation that isn't as costly as this number is. You could go, I don't know, maybe with your ordinance enforcement, but make sure your roof drains are disconnected from the footing drains. So that typically looks like your gutter going into a pipe underground somewhere on the sides of your house where those come down. The city's ordinance right now does not allow that. It has to be disconnected. So that is something that could be enforced now. That wouldn't be as obviously high of a cost because that, that water does contribute, and there's not really a good way to quantify that. And even if you did separate a street, you're still going to have that element of it. So that's something the city could do in the meantime.
Ashley, I have a question. So a lot of this, a lot of our sewer and a lot of whole subdivisions and quadrants all flow in the same direction. So if you did a sewer separation in something that was upstream in one of these areas, is it possible it could stop the flooding in a downstream combined area that would take enough off the system? That fixing one quadrant would help another one downstream from it?
It, it would. To what capacity? That's where the hydraulic studies and the stormwater modeling would come in. But if you're taking flow out of your sanitary, you're essentially opening it up for someone else. So maybe that is a basement that doesn't flood anymore. That is definitely a possibility.
You guys are really quiet. I know, I'm really.
Just a lot to digest.
Well, it is, yeah. Well, and it's things to read and, yeah, definitely, yeah.
Well, what I would ask is everybody, take a look at this and then can send me your questions. I can forward them to Ashley and then send them all back to you, or Ashley can come in again, and we can have another work session.
Yes.
First, I want to make sure you understand, everybody understands. First, I want to make sure you understand, everybody understands this and then we can make a, a plan moving forward.
Could we get the overlay of the historical complaint data or new data if that comes out soon so that we can compare it to?
We made a note of getting the data and then, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, if, if, once we get that, we can add it.
That'd be great.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Ashley.
You're welcome.
We appreciate, I mean, we don't appreciate the large numbers, but we appreciate the time and the work for this. Fatmir, Fatmir, thank you so much for that. It's really great meeting you. All right. We'll move on to 9B, the discussion of city business. Who's got something? Yeah. Go ahead.
So with, with the committee that we're looking at for homelessness and housing stability, I've gotten some great ideas from members of the commission and from the city manager. And so I'm just a little waiting until the next, until after the election to get that started so that then we'll see who's on the commission and then we'll get it approved if we can get it on the calendar then, so.
Yeah, it sounds like you're considering a, a commission motion to authorize the committee and then you might want to have some ideas who you'd like to have serve on the committee at that time. And if you don't, it can be hashed out at the commission meeting and then get some volunteers and then have a motion. Yeah, move it forward.
I agree. That's, that's why I'm waiting until.
Yeah, makes sense. That makes sense.
Then we'll, we'll know who we have. But yeah, thank you for that.
Thank you for getting it rolling or doing the preliminary work for it. That's good. That's great. Yeah, yeah, I think people are excited about it. Anybody else got something? All right. Go ahead.
It's a regular meeting thing.
Okay. All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right. Well, then we will move on to commissioner comments. Does anyone have any work session commissioner comments? Well, you both look like you were going to say something. Okay, go ahead.
I'm really happy to, to see this and it's a lot of information. It's a lot of work that's been put in. And so I'm, I'm, I'm really happy that we're taking some steps to, to fix this issue and to learn more. And, you know, infrastructure's been a big priority and really understanding all the, all that goes into it and, and being able to combine those projects is really great too. So I appreciate this and I'm very happy to see it.
All right.
How long do you think it'll be before Ashley comes back to present or do we, especially with it?
No, so I want you to look that over.
Okay.
And send me any questions you have. And if it looks like we have a lot of questions and you feel you want Ashley to come back, we'll have her come back. And Fatmir, I'm going to leave Fatmir out and, you know, we can go into this in, in more detail.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. Anybody have any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. See you at 7:00.